Well, maybe we are. What are you looking at? My agenda.
What are you gonna do, who will call?
Take mine.
Okay, 'cause I had it all marked up. That's okay. I'll call the meeting to order, Doug.
Here.
John?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Nathan?
Here.
Travis? We haven't heard from him.
No.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number three is the consent agenda.
I did add, since I'm, Christine has sent them to you, I did add approval of street closing for Halloween Town in Drayton is here if you guys have any questions on that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'm doing it on Halloween night. Second.
Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Travis? No, he's not here.
Guess we don't have him anymore, huh?
Public input, this is the time if you wish to talk to the council about something that's not on the agenda to come forward.
I'm here to address ordinance for fence. The variance committee, and they said they did not approve hardship, but to come back to you guys to address the ordinance, because it doesn't necessarily obstruct you. I'm on the corner lot, I'm trying to put in a privacy fence to extend the existing 53 feet that are already there. I'm taking it in and closing in.
Where's this at?
This is at 501 South Jackson Committee.
501?
501 South Jackson.
Turn around.
So I'm on the corner of Jackson.
Right across from Fred's Auto.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to extend the fence that is on this right here, 501 property line, it's 16 feet from the road, so it's not actually an obstruction per se, because there's also a garage that extends two feet beyond my fence.
So this, who sent you here?
I'm coming to change, you will get the ordinance to address.
Okay, you haven't even tried to get anything out?
He did, and they denied it.
Planning and zoning?
The variance committee.
He went to the Board of Adjustment to try to get a variance.
Then you can approve hardship.
Can approve hardship.
So they did deny it. We did change the ordinance a year or two ago, where we did allow fences a foot from the sidewalk, on the side, yard, street side, but they had to be chain link or see-through. They did not allow the privacy fences, and he would like you guys to consider changing the ordinance again and allowing the privacy fences.
I would not be in favor of that.
What are you going to use it for?
I'm just trying to close out my yard so I can let my dog free in the yard. I've got a, my mother-in-law moved into my basement and brought a pit bull. I've kept it licensed and all that, no problems. I just like to keep it in the yard and keep other dogs out. They tell me an invisible fence is not a good idea with pit bulls. I have an existing fence of 53 feet already there. I'm just trying to finish out the yard and close it off with the house and close off some of the utilities on the side of my house.
We do not have an ordinance against a pit bull.
I know that.
Okay, I'm just telling you, but...
But they do have a tendency to jump.
I know that. But I just want you to be aware of that, but if that, if he bites anybody or anything...
I understand.
Okay, alright.
She'd more like to lick you. She just doesn't know the words, come here.
Well, I wouldn't be, I mean, I wouldn't be in favor of giving him any kind of special peripheral, I mean, you were setting a precedent, so if we do this, where yours might not be an obstruction of justice, if we allow...
It's not an obstruction of justice.
Or, I'm sorry, an obstruction of vision or anything like that, that's what I meant. Where yours might not be, the next person's might, and so if we allow you to do it, then we are opening it up for everybody in town.
So you're telling me I have to take my existing fence down or extend?
I'm telling you, you have to match the ordinance.
With a chain link.
I'm telling you, you have to follow the ordinance and the rules that are in the ordinance. However you do that, that's up to you.
Well, in order to follow the ordinance, I would have to extend the fence with chain link.
Okay. If that's what you have to do, then that's what you would have to do. That's my opinion, I mean, there's three other people up here.
No, I mean, the chain link's cheap, so what gets it cost?
Okay, moving on. Anybody else have anything to make comment about? Miss Linus. Okay, possible action, Second Avenue water line repair project. Is that you, Travis? Dave?
Both of us, I think.
Yeah, both of you.
Well, there we are.
Don't be shy, boys.
I'll pass out some drawings. So we have looked at this a while back, this is the original concept to run down the edge of this Hillcoat Street, and as we were working on putting this together, it became pretty evident that with the existing water line there and some new utilities, we wanted to look at, where would this be most appropriate if we were to put it where it should go if the street were widened in the future? And if you take the street right away to 60 feet and you put in a 29-foot back-to-back curb, gutter street section, which is pretty typical for residential, roughly 30 feet, you take half of that out of there, so you have 15 feet left, put a sidewalk five feet wide, put off the property line, you're six feet in. That happens to be where all the trees are located. So as we were working with Travis on this, we said, well, if we try to put this in where it probably should go for future, we're going to impact a lot of those trees. We discussed possible directional drilling that and trying to tie every service in. The cost started to go up, so we just wanted to at least present this to you to indicate that we could put it in right off the edge of the street, Fairmont Street, in order to do that, replace half the street possibly, and it looks a little bit odd where we can go out and put it where the trees are and try directional drill, where we can take the trees out and replant it. So if it got to be a little bit more of a hassle than we originally hoped anymore, Travis can just go out and install the water line.
Okay, council, what do you think?
Is that a pretty good summary, Travis?
Yeah, that's a summary on it. Two of the trees are, we're looking at taking down anyways, due to the life expectancy, we had a tree company come in and look at them. They got some soft spots that they recommend there's probably, probably at a time to do it, but that still leaves four of the trees that are still pretty decent trees. We're roughly $10,000 to take them all down. We're right about $50,000 to directional bore it. And then, as long as we spot all the utilities and stuff for them. What else? Otherwise, if we were to dig it off the backside of the curb, or off where it's at now, off the edge of the street now, we don't touch the trees, there's nothing saying in 15 years the trees don't die, and we end up saying, why didn't we put this back there to begin with?
Tell me somebody else on that street.
Charlie Adams.
Who?
Charlie Adams.
Tell me somebody else. I don't know that person.
It's the big yellow house with the wrought iron fence around it.
By who?
The big yellow house where Si, not Sizer's, Stuart, she's still there.
Oh, okay.
In that area.
Okay. And these trees are in front of Charlie Adams' house, huh? Okay.
On Second Avenue, on the side, and on the side, Second Avenue. The front of her house, I believe, is on Jackson.
Yep. What kind of trees are these?
Maples, I believe.
Two of them are pretty hollow and need to come down, but the other ones...
So these are large?
They're large trees, yeah. They're expensive to take down, large trees.
So we don't, are they silver maples then? Because they get rather large, and the underside of the leaf is silvery, a deeper notch. And they're, they're a problem, we don't even allow them to be planted anymore in the parking.
John, I don't think we planted those in the last eight years.
No, no.
Yeah, we planted a lot of trees in town.
Might not even be within our lifetime that those trees were planted, but it sounds like it'd be cheaper for the trees to go, unfortunately.
Okay. Any more questions for them?
So what, what do you recommend you do, Travis? I mean, we're not the ones doing it.
I think we want to talk with citizens before we go too far with this, to see how much of an opposition there would be to taking the trees down, but we wanted to make sure that council was aware of this before we went to start talking.
I did talk to Charlie. When I was there, we actually had another tree that blew down over their fence when I was dealing with that. I kinda put a bug in her ear about this, and she was not too keen on the idea of her trees going away. She understood, but she wasn't happy about it, so I guess, I mean, I think we're, if we bore underneath of them, there's nothing saying that they, they won't die in two years anyways. I don't know, this is, this is one of those, one of those touchy subjects, because, you know, we are Trees Forever City, and they tear trees down for this, so...
How many good trees are there, then? I mean, you take the two that are hollow.
He said four.
Yeah, four in that area.
Four good trees.
Yeah, at least four.
There's city right-of-way trees as well, right?
Right. Now, the only thing that we can do to justify if we do take the trees down would be to, the sidewalk there was bumped out, jogged out and around. We're to take that out, straighten that up and clean that area up, I mean, and then obviously replace with new plantings there. That would be the, that would be the bonus, and that's what I explained to her for us to do.
So are you guys wanting us to tell you, go ahead and go back and talk to them some more and explain to them our position, or are you guys wanting us to tell you, yeah, go ahead and cut the trees down?
I kinda wanna know what your, your guys' feeling is.
We're pretty much telling you that this smaller project that we thought our guys could do themselves is turning into a huge project. It's what we, what we're bringing to you, pretty much.
I mean, I'm always in favor of doing it for the lowest amount that we can.
The boringness, what, $50,000?
I mean, if you're talking a difference between $10,000 and $50,000.
Exactly.
For trees that we don't know.
We'd get a lot of trees for the difference there. We could put eight trees in for the four we take out.
Well, and if we do it that way, you're saying we might kill those trees anyway.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's nothing saying that they'll stay alive, so...
Yeah.
And two of them are hollow and should come down anyway.
Right. So that would be my preference.
Yeah, I think, I think so too, take out the trees, plant, replant twice as many as you take out. I like, I just like that ratio and keep the cost down. But if you recommend we should talk to the citizens, again, I don't know, do we set a public hearing for this kind of thing? That's not really a...
Well, the next house, is it a new house? Oh, we're on, okay. Is it the...
Yellow house.
I know where that is.
You didn't say she was like adamantly like, she just didn't favor that option.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She didn't slam the door on.
I'm sure she understands.
I walked out of it.
Yeah.
She tarred and feathered me, but, yeah.
She probably would understand if you explained the reasoning behind it.
If that's the direction you guys wanna go, I think it's something Connie and I could possibly set up a meeting with, sit down and talk to her and explain to her. Maybe have Dave draw us up something to give her an idea of what it would look like when we're done.
Yellow house.
What do you tell you live in that neighborhood?
I hate to see trees go, but there are some things that, like the mayor said, they were planted a long time ago, and, and things weren't always clear where they planted them. So I say that the trees might unfortunately need to go. You gotta be realistic with the city's money.
And this ain't, this ain't happening this year.
I was gonna have Dave update you guys on the new...
My next question is how timely, when were you planning on doing this?
Well, we have things pretty much ready to go as far as the plans and specs, but we wanted to make sure that we let people know, and they'll take, probably have an alphabet for at least a month, we've got some notification requirements we have to meet, and we wouldn't be able to get it done before...
I guess people could come to a council meeting too and argue their case if they're that passionate about their tree, or the tree in front of their house.
So you're gonna be out for a month with bids, and then what? So when, when do you actually think you'll be starting this project, or do you have a rough estimate?
It would always start...
Right after?
No, I would think that the contract we got, we'll get the bond, all that, it's usually about a month after we can afford bids, before they really get started on anything.
I thought we were doing this one, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we're going out to bids, Dave, on this one.
Okay.
Oh yeah, we're not doing the boring.
Yeah, no, we're not doing the boring.
Yeah, so something like this, we'll be able to, how long do you think we'll take for the material, Travis?
I know, I did be next spring, I think, before we'd start this. Just because all the stuff we got going on right now. We got leaves that are gonna be starting to hit, it's only four of us, we've got concrete cut up that we gotta get replaced, and we're still dirt work down at the park, so I would say, I'd say spring would be the best time to, for us to try to attack it.
Probably I'll let the tree board know, so if they wanna put in their two cents, they can.
Yeah, this was the portion of the water project that they were gonna try to do themselves in our house. And we just kinda picked the, we thought we were picking the easiest street, but we picked...
So do we wanna give Connie any instructions, or we're just gonna...
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to do a motion in a second to either do the boring or do, do the tree removal.
Okay, what do you wanna do, guys?
Well, I'll make a motion to do the tree removal.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Doug?
Doug.
Joe, John, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Public hearings, resolution 44-2019, approving project agreement with Flint County to resurface Gillette Lane.
We have a 28 agreement with the county, they maintain some of our gravel roads, and in return, we maintain some of the roads during the winter for them. Gillette Lane is one of the roads that they maintain for us. We are required in that agreement to add rock to that road every, at least every five years. We have not done that in many years, and they did go ahead and put that recycled asphalt or whatever it was, millings on the road. So we were going back and forth with them about that. In the meantime, they've used the millings, I don't know what they did to it exactly, but they're using it as a base, so now the rock will need to be put on that road. Travis checked for me, and we found that we could not really do it anymore reasonable than what the county's gonna charge us, so we would like approval for them to go ahead and take care of that road for us.
How much is it?
Nine, should be in there, I think it was around $9,000.
$9,160 something.
Yeah.
I don't know, my computer's still updating.
What was that?
My computer's still updating.
Oh, and we do not have the equipment either to, to maintain that road, so...
Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Doug? John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Okay, resolution. 45-2019, approving civil engineer concept design services agreement for nature park.
We had YTT come up with a concept plan for our nature park in Sports Complex. There was a grant that became available that I was trying to work for, for a trail around the nature park, so YTT was coming up with all the information and working with me on that grant. Unfortunately, that grant, federal grant, pertained more to hooking our trail up to other state and federal trails, so all the points you got were mostly for that. The only score we would have scored high on was connecting it to senior citizens. So I had them come up with all the, the plans and specs, and it was the details of how long the trail was gonna be and all that kind of stuff. So the contract with them, we need to approve so we can pay them for that, that service, and also, she's gonna work with me on the state grant, and also a grant through Wellmark for a wellness program that they have a grant available. Mount Vernon just got that grant for the trail that's gonna go around their wellness center, Mount Vernon. So we're gonna try for those two grants, they're both $100,000 each, so this would be using them to help with the grant as well as all the specs that I need to apply for future grants.
Okay. Questions for?
Can the grant money pay for the roughly $6,000 we're gonna spend now, or not?
I'm not positive on it, it just depends on the grant.
I'm just curious.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Nathan?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug? Resolution 46-2019, approving annual appropriation for Brothers Market tiff rebate.
This is something we have to do every year in order to give them their tiff rebate. Instead of certifying the whole thing against the debt, we do annual appropriation, that way only that year's payment gets certified against our debt, so each year we have to do that, do the annual appropriations over again.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. How many, what year are we in, about six?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Discussion on overnight parking on city park and downtown and possible setting of public hearing.
We have had some issues with people that are parking all their vehicles on the city park parking area. So I did some research, and I found, you guys should have had a copy of the parking ordinance. We do have an ordinance that says in city parks, they cannot park unless they are utilizing the park or a park patron, but it also states that we have to have a sign posted there. We do not have a sign posted there, so I'm, I'm ordering signs to put in our parks. The other thing that we'd like you to consider, I talked with Amy and Rick, they are both here tonight, is not only are their cars parked there, there's starting to get parked like trailers with...
Snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles and jet skis and all that kind of stuff. It's really made it hard for Drayton to mow this summer because those cars are there. Amy did go and talk to them nicely to ask them if they would move, and all they did was move the vehicles down one spot. So it really, like I said, it's really making it hard for Drayton to mow. So like I said, now that I did find that Chapter 69, Number 19, we can order those signs and get those placed in all of our city parking, parking lots, and then, but we would like to still consider the possibility of having there be no overnight parking at the park, which would eliminate some of that problem also. We did discuss at one time about the parking downtown during the snow removal. We do not allow parking during the night hours at all downtown, and I know you guys had talked about it once, that maybe you were only gonna do that during the winter months, but we never really made a decision or did a change to the ordinance, and I'm just asking if we do make a change to this ordinance, to reconsider that, and just let me know which way you wanna go, so if we did need to change it, we can do it all at once.
So most people downtown, parking overnight would be people living in apartments? And isn't the landlord supposed to provide parking?
They are.
Off-street for?
Okay, so let's set a public hearing.
We can discuss it for a little bit, though.
You what?
We can discuss it for a little bit.
Our park is closed overnight.
It is.
And the ordinance says they can't, they can only park during park, during park hours, right?
No, I don't think it does. It just, it just says that in front of adjacent to or in any city park parking lot, unless that person's currently utilizing the park as a park patron, is prohibited. But it also says the following sign shall be posted, which I don't remember us ever having those signs in there, so I asked Travis if maybe they were taken down at some point, but we, we did not locate any, so we can order some from Iowa Prison Industries.
I am all in favor of not parking there overnight and all that kind of stuff, but I don't like that part about unless you're, unless you're a park patron, and the only reason I don't like it is because I'm thinking about the people who live along there, like if they were having their family Christmas or something. I just wanna make sure that we're not going to be, which I know you guys don't, be passing out tickets because somebody's there and at the house across the street or something. That would be my only concern with that wording.
Right now, that's the way it is.
I know.
You don't think we got trouble with the Stu Park? We, we had one person parking there overnight.
Well, I don't think anybody should park there overnight.
That used to be our gamble.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you think there is one at Stu?
We did have problems with that in the past, that the residents were parking there overnight, so when people would come to the, or all day long and at night, so when...
And sauerkraut days would be another thing that pops into my head, because some of those people, I would just rather that they left their car there overnight.
Unfortunately, in most situations, it's one person that ruins it for, for everybody. So like I said, we can, we can set a public hearing and discuss it further, we don't have to make a decid, you know, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, but I just wanted to bring all those to your attention and let you guys know the problems that we're having, and Amy and Rick wanted to address it with you guys also.
I'll set it for the next council meeting then.
Okay.
Next regular one, I still move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate? Okay. Resolution 47-2019, approving depository.
We just had our audit last week, and we did have a new audit firm this year. Really, really like them, they're very smart, they, they know what they're doing, they had a lot of suggestions, some of them I agree with, some of them I don't, but on our depository resolution, they did notice that the Iowa State Code that references that has changed, and our ordinance still reflects the old code, so they just suggested that we just approve another resolution with the current code in it. So that's all that is spoken.
Motion to approve the updated resolution.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate? Any correspondence from anybody? But I missed a whole section.
New business, 7A.
Okay. Discussion on updated capital improvement plan.
We've talked about this a little bit, I just wanted to update you guys and let you know that I've met with most of the departments, they are providing me with a list of information of projects that they anticipate they may need in the next five to 10 years. Once I get all the lists from the different departments, we'll sit down at a council meeting, or we can have an additional workshop, and you guys can prioritize those according to what needs to be done and what you wanna be, have included in that new five to 10-year plan. Once we do that, we can move forward, and then I try to fi, find the funding availabilities for those different projects and when they can be done. And I think Michelle is here tonight from Hills Bank, she wanted to talk to you a little bit about one of the projects that they, the downtown project.
Okay, Michelle.
Oh, well, I guess I was just curious what the city's plan was for the sidewalks on Main Street. We have some unevenness and things that needs to be addressed, either we shaved them down, or I didn't know what part of that was in streetscape's plan, just so we can kinda work together, I don't wanna like replace the whole bunch that's gonna get torn out in five years, so...
Because there are two separate panels on the sidewalks, one of them is city property and the other one is, so a lot of these are gonna have to be, if we do do a sidewalk project, is gonna have to be a joint project with the property owners.
Which is probably not gonna make very many people happy.
Probably not, but, so...
The other thing, facilities, our facilities crew brought up, is that the incline of the sidewalk, I think, is more than what's code, so it just has to be addressed as far as, probably let that out if it was to be replaced. That makes that higher curve.
It was a good idea at the time. But that was before you were born. No, they're not that old. No, they're not that old. Oh.
So I'm sure the downtown streetscape is gonna be one of the items that's gonna be on the list, um, for you guys to prioritize. We've talked about it, um, several times before and we've also talked about the, um, maintenance department doing some of the repairs that can be done. I know their list keeps getting longer and longer. But, so I will make sure that that, that is placed on the list that's presented to the council for their prior, for them to prioritize.
Okay, anything else, guys?
That's all for that.
Okay.
So, I got some on that. Um, so when are we gonna start going over this?
Um, I've got some lists already. Um, I have, I'm, still have the library and historical preservation, they're meeting this week, I believe, so I think in the next couple of weeks I should have most of the departments covered.
Dude, I mean, there's just a couple that need ground down right now. I guess maybe to answer your question, I'd probably just have, have them just do that and give us time to get together and so we know how big a project we're actually looking at, just so you're not in limbo right now.
Are we thinking of something that's twenty-twenty or are we looking farther out?
It's farther out.
Okay.
I'm, I'm assuming, I guess I don't wanna speak for you guys, I just, I could only imagine it's gonna be farther out, so.
That's perfect, I'm gonna go with this next year, so just knowing that is helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, moving on. Discussion on possible action on mowing proposals for New Year, New Year.
Next year.
Next year.
Um, if you guys remember, we had to change mowing companies mid-season here. Um, I've gotten nothing but compliments regarding that company, they're doing a really, really good job. Um, we did not, um, approve a contract passed this year, so I was just looking for your guidance on, um, if you want me to look into extending their contract or if you would like me to go out on, um, bids for a new contract for the next three years.
Were they willing to keep pricing and everything?
I haven't even...
Or we don't know?
I haven't even discussed it with them yet.
Can we talk to them first and find out what, you know, like if they're gonna be raising their price or anything like that? I mean, if they're good and we're working out, I mean, if they were gonna keep this thing right, we'd be silly not to.
Yeah. I think we, we get what we pay for and we've paid for it a few times. So I, I, I know the company, I think they have a good reputation and, uh, as long as their price isn't too high, um, it's a lot less problems for you in getting complaint calls.
We have not received one complaint since I took over.
That's great.
They may not even wanna do it, I mean, I would, I would think that they would, but you never know.
No.
Okay, we'll wait and see on that then. Or do we wanna meet with them? Well, we wouldn't have to.
I'll check with them and report back at the next meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Correspondence?
We still have one more, seven C.
Seven C. Copier lease.
Oh, the copier machine for the lease agreement for next year.
It's pretty much the same thing, um, our copier lease will be up in the next, um, eight months and I'm getting bombarded with companies trying to, so, same thing, just wondering, in your opinion, do you, would you like me to try to extend or, um, at a reasonable price or would you prefer I just go out for proposals?
Are you happy with them?
Um, yeah, a copier's a copier.
I was just gonna say, I mean, that might be something to go out for bids on, just to see, because, I mean, that really isn't anything, I mean, a copier is a copier.
And there's a lot of competition in the, yeah, environment, so checking that price would be good.
I'll move forward on that then.
Okay. Now correspondence. Now we'll do the correspondence.
Um, the only correspondence I really had was, you should have a letter there, um, that you can open and read at your convenience. It's, uh, just a, a complaint from one of our landlords regarding our rental inspection, um, procedures that we've been doing. And once you read it, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Okay, city engineer report.
Girl Scouts.
Public works director?
Travis? You got anything?
Uh, yeah, um, just a couple things, like I said earlier when I was talking. We got leaves starting, um, we had to get water meters ready today, so we didn't get a full day of going around, so if we missed somebody's piles, we'll be around tomorrow to get them. Cemetery cleanup, we spent, uh, roughly two full days trimming and cleaning up trees and bushes out there and the Girl Scouts, right, guy? Went out Saturday and they spent a couple hours cleaning and we'll finish that up tomorrow, be in, tomorrow's the deadline, so we should have that, that up to par. Other than that, uh, everything else is, uh, no, the other reason why I wanted to explain why this was probably more of a spring project for us is everybody remembers how Main Street was when it was gravel through the winter. These residents would probably feel the same way if we started on it now and do the timeframe, not being able to get it, the street patch back, so, other than that, I'm good.
I'm talking. Police chief? Any questions for Rick?
Well, I was gonna say this in my comments, but I'll say it now, but, uh, they had their little, uh, real-life superheroes deal at the park yesterday, so Southeast Lynn and the Park and Rec program put it on, and Rick was there, so the fire department was there, brought a truck, um, ambulance was there, DOT was there, both, Amy and Rick were both there. Um, the helicopter came in, I'm not forgetting anybody, Drayton? Oh, National Guard, yeah. Well, anyways, so the kids were there and they got to, you know, they had the lights on and the doors open and people got to go in and see, but Rick did a couple demonstrations with Rico. And people really, really did enjoy watching that and seeing that. It was amazing, I mean, he did a really good job, obviously Rico did a really good job, but it was really nice to get some, we've seen them here, obviously, in the council chambers before, but it was really nice to get some of the residents to be able to see what Rico does and what he's capable of. And poor Riley had to be his guinea pig again. So, yeah, it was good.
He's still got his arms.
Does he have all of his fingers? I thought he did.
Yeah, I never thought about that one. Okay. Anything else?
So anyway, thank you guys for coming to that, because it was really nice to have you guys there.
Fire chief report?
Brandon couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to, me to let you guys know that they did apply for a DNR grant. It's a seven thousand dollar matching grant where, um, they would be able to purchase wildfire, wildfire gear and they're hoping to get ten sets. So, they're, I just wanted you to know that they did apply for that and they're hoping to get that.
Okay. Connie, do you have a report?
Um, good news, we did receive the grants for the evaluations of the barns at the nature park, history center wall and the library wall, so, um, the history preservation commission will be working with them, they're probably going to come sometime in November to do those evaluations. Um, we'll be applying for a tree grant again this next spring, so if there's anyone out there that would like a tree planted in there right away, um, give us a call at City Hall and we'll put you on the list. There's going to be a bike ride on Highway thirty bypass, October twentieth, at eleven AM. Um, it's gonna be kinda like a grand opening, but not really opening it yet, they just want to, people to be out there to get an idea of what it's gonna be like, so, anybody who wants to grab their bicycle and, um, not a motorcycle, but a bicycle on that day, um, it starts at eleven AM. Um, we finally received approval from the federal government organization that, um, it does the funding for Myers Meadows, where we can actually close on those two parcels of property that are, that take us in and out of the sports complex, it's been a long time waiting, uh, but they finally did release that, so Mark's got all the closing documents ready to go, we're just waiting on the, um, partial release of liens that Myers Meadows has from the federal government, so, moving forward and closing that one out.
That's all I have. Mayor's report, hi, don't have anything. Nate?
I have nothing either, so I guess we're doing council reports.
Okay.
Nope, I'm done.
Done?
I'd like to thank the people involved, the superhero program also. I was rather disappointed, though, we don't have a full slate running for city council and I encourage anyone that is interested, they can still, um, try to do it as a write-in candidate, uh, also to vote, it'll be not until next month, but keep that in mind, it's important to your town for everyone to vote.
That's all I have.
I'd like to make a comment about that. On the write-in, you have to remember to fill in the little circle, just like you're voting every place else, 'cause if that circle isn't filled in, it doesn't get counted, unless the laws change, but I doubt that.
What about the individual you're writing in, I mean, how much of their name do you